What are we thinking?
What are we thinking?
I'm thinking other than the meeting. And Kate, all the others should put their devices aside.
Is that better?
Better.
I think we've lost it. Yeah.
I think we've lost it. Yeah.
I still hear the feedback.
Yeah, I still hear the feedback.
Looks like it's coming.
Mark, I'm sorry. Yeah, I had to get on through the internet. I can't. There's no function to mute if somebody can do that for me.
Kate? Can you mute?
Can you mute?
Are we better now?
Are we better now?
No.
No.
Kevin, do you not have a mute button at the bottom?
Not that I can see. If there is a stop video, I don't see a mute, though. So, sorry.
Better now?
Better now?
No.
No.
Oh, great.
Can you mute me, Kate, or no?
Kevin, I can't mute you.
Okay, I guess I'll just have to get off and try to get on by the iPhone. I know you got a few things to do before you need me anyway, so hopefully I can be back on by then.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm sorry.
Okay, better? Is that better? Seems like it, right? Okay, no feedback now. Okay, we'll go ahead and call our town council meeting of January 26th to order, and if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, or maybe we can do a right sitting since we can see Brendan's flag there.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic of Thank you. Roll call, Kate?
Sure. Sorry. Mayor Kristi?
Here.
Council Luddy?
Here.
Council Peonesa?
Here, virtually.
Council Russell?
Here.
Council Yorinaga?
Here.
Council Vich?
Here.
Kate, we didn't hear you, Kate. We have a call.
Yeah, we couldn't hear.
I muted myself too quickly. We have a call in here.
Well, I'll be crazy by the end of this meeting. This is gonna be a fun time. Okay, so we have our audience of citizens now. If anyone wishes to speak on any topic tonight on our agenda, or something else that's bothering them, depending upon the amount of people, please keep your presentation to a couple minutes, two, three minutes at the most.
Mayor Christian Campanelli would like to address the town council.
Sure. Hey, Christian, how are you?
Hi, Mayor. I'm doing well, thank you. Christian Campanelli, 30 Sawmill Drive, Berlin, Connecticut. I just wanted to pop on to thank you and Councilor Joanne Angelico-Stetson for working on the proclamation that I know you guys are gonna issue at the end of this meeting. With Councilor Yorinaga tonight is his wife, Police Commissioner Yorinaga, and she is gonna say a few words about human trafficking, why this is such an important thing, especially for our town and for the town of Berlin. You know, initially, a lot of people, you know, don't sort of understand what it is, or, you know, know that it happens here, but it does. And she has some eye-opening data that she's gonna share with you guys. And, you know, I think you'll find that this is a problem in Berlin, and something that we need to focus on, and need to make sure our police department has the resources to tackle, because it's a significant concern. So, thank you, guys, for issuing that proclamation. And I know she is going to be doing a seminar for parents through the McGee PTO, so I know she has that information as well, so I wanna just kick it over to her and give her an opportunity to talk with you guys, too. So, that's it for me. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Christian. Melissa, you there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Yeah, Melissa, you know what? I wonder, I wonder, do you think it would be better served if we, we don't have much on the agenda. I wonder if we just get through the agenda, this is the last thing on the agenda, before we do appointments, which we wouldn't make it way through that, believe me. And then, like, at the beginning of our talk about this, might be more appropriate then. Does that make sense?
That's fine with me, Mayor.
Yeah, we should get through this fairly quickly. There's just a few items, and then, and then we can do that all as one piece, which kinda makes sense. That's all right. Okay.
Thank you.
Let's do that. Anyone else in the audience on another topic? Once, twice? Three times? Okay, we'll go ahead and close.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I wanted to make sure that there was nobody else that wanted to speak. I did wanna do this during Audience of Citizens, and not during Councilor Communications, just in case there was anybody that might be listening or was involved. But, as many are aware, last Monday, the Biden-Harris administration had proclaimed January 18th, which was, yeah, 18th, which was also Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, as National Day of Service. So, Christian Campanelli and I thought it would be a great idea to observe it by coordinating a food drive on behalf of the Berlin Democratic Town Committee, for the Berlin Food Pantry. And we expected to maybe contribute a couple of carloads of food, and we wound up on Monday and Tuesday delivering a couple of truckloads and a trailer full, and $440 in gift cards and cash to the Berlin Food Pantry. So, we were just blown away by the generosity of Berlin residents. It was absolutely incredible. So, we wanna just thank anybody who might be listening, and thank residents, and and also, there was a nonprofit that saw the post on Facebook. It's called Freddie and Little Massey Calling Corp. And they donated literally boxes and boxes of food, and household, and hygiene items. And so, I wanted to give them a shout out as well, but, you know, it was just such a, such an amazing display of generosity, so thank you to Berlin folks.
Okay, thank you, Joanne.
Excellent.
That's great. We know that, you know, after the holidays, I think sometimes people forget, and certainly with the COVID situation, we're still in, people, you know, we know they need help, and I think after the holidays, sometimes it goes away, so that's good. We're continuing to do to do that, and help our food pantry, and help the people that they help. Okay, anyone else, Audience of Citizens, other than human trafficking? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and close the Audience of Citizens. We'll go on to our consent agenda. We have we have three items here: donations to the Berlin Library, gift certificate, issue to Mr. Tom Marino. That was for golf only. That was the situation at the golf course, and confirmation of the tom and appointment of John Demko to serve as a two-year term as the town's citation hearing officer. Do we have any discussion on these items before we take a motion? Hearing none. I'll go and take a motion on our consent agenda.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Council Luddy here. I will make a motion to accept the three items on the consent agenda tonight.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to new business. Topic one. Eros, what do we got?
Good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda is the Berlin Emergency Dispatchers Contract. I have Denise Parsons and Kevin Delaney to give you a little recap. Go to you, Denise. John Mute.
Hi, can you hear me? Well, hi, everyone. It's nice to see you again. It's been a while. I'm here tonight to talk about the successor agreement for the Berlin Dispatchers Group. For those of you who were on council in 2017, you might recall that the dispatchers used to be part of the White Collar Union. They're concerned that they weren't fellow dispatchers in surrounding towns. Can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Hello? I'm here? Okay.
Yes.
Everybody participated. I did. So, back in 2017, we did get a successor agreement. We were a year out, and we're retroactively inputting raises at that time. But it was agreed then that the next contract, we would talk about salary adjustments for this group, because that was one of their primary concerns leaving the White Collar Union. COVID did delay our contract negotiations at the beginning of this year. Their contract did expire June 30th. They've been working under the old contract since then. The chief and the dispatcher union president got together and sort of negotiated through the language issues, and then Eros and Kevin and I met with the president, along with the chief, to talk about the financials. I feel, you know, we've done some research and comparative to other towns around us. They are, in fact, correct that our Berlin dispatchers are making significantly less than some of the surrounding towns, including Newington, Windsor, South Windsor, Simsbury, Weathersfield, Rocky Hill, Farmington, Cromwell, are all making more than $6,000 up to $16,000 more annually than our dispatchers. There are three towns making less right now: Plainville, New Britain, and Suddington. What we look to do was give them an increase in the first year, and then kinda stick with our two and a quarter that we've been doing after that. So, Kevin Delaney is here to talk about the finances, because he was able to find the money to give a 5% increase retroactive this year, which is the big piece of this contract that we're looking to change. The other contract changes are included in there, and a lot of it is language changes that the police chief and the union worked out that makes running the department much easier. The wages are the big issue. So, we're looking for a 5% increase retroactive to July 1 of 2020, and then July 1, 2021, and 2022, they would do a two-and-a-quarter increase. So, we feel like this is a very fair contract, and we're looking for the council to approve it going forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Denise. Kevin, what do we got?
Good evening. We budget for anticipated contracts that are coming up for renewal in the next fiscal year that haven't been negotiated by putting a two-and-a-quarter percent increase into the budget. We had a unique circumstance this year that freed up a little bit of additional money. Three contracts were coming due. Two were reasonably large unions, the police with about 40 members, and the white collar contract with about 20 members. Conversely, the dispatcher union is nine members. So, we had some turnover in the other unions, which resulted in some of that anticipated increase not being used in those unions. And so, we're able to, if you agree, shift some of that money over. And, you know, we talked about percentages, but to give you perspective, the total increase, the additional increase over the two-and-a-quarter is $16,700 for the year, covering all nine of those members. So, we didn't find a huge windfall, but it is an opportunity, as Denise brought out, to close the gap a little bit. And again, it's a unique circumstance, because we had two quite large unions, and with that turnover freed up for really a smaller union to be able to to address the shortfall.
Okay. Okay, great. Appreciate that. Anything else? Anyone else needs to add from the staff? Anybody? Good. Okay, questions from the council on the contract? Any questions from any council member? Okay, hearing none. It can make sense, bring us up a little bit on par with some of our neighbors, and we found the funding even better. So, there's no other questions. The town manager and personnel director, finance director in favor of this, so we will go ahead and take a motion on this.
Okay, Mayor. Councilor Luddy here. I move to approve the contract between the town of Berlin and CALU, Local Number 911, Emergency Dispatcher Employees, for the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023.
Thank you. Take a second on that?
Councilor Prunusai, second it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number two is, thank you, Denise. Agenda item two is amendments to the ethics policy. And I see Mr. Heinz on the line. And if he is willing to speak, or if he can speak, he on mute, Kevin. Yeah, there you are. You're unmuted now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Kevin.
Hi, Cap.
Hey, Pete. Yeah, so we were asked as the Board of Ethics to just look at the policy to make recommendations on clarity and process to the council. So, the summary of the agenda is fairly self-explanatory, I think. There were, the one issue that we had was whether to even keep the financial statement requirement. You know, whether to make recommendations on that to the council, and we had several meetings as a commission to discuss those issues, and many of you who are in this meeting tonight participated in those meetings at our request. And it became clear that, from our perspective, that the financial statement was still a necessary process that the town needs. Some of you may recall or have been involved in the audit that occurred in town a few years back, and some of the input we got from the financial manager you know, was that probably is a necessary, or at least you know, desirable thing to have when the town gets audited, to have these financial statements that, you know, those of us who are elected are other certain positions already have to, you know, submit that information to the town to, you know, for the purpose of having decisions that those of us who vote on certain things, or have purchasing that, you know, members of the town have confidence, because there's clarity in the financial disclosure. So, that's the first piece of it. There were just certain recommendations on what needs to be disclosed in the financial statement. And then, the other issue we had was just with the notice requirement. It was pretty ambiguous as to how the process would go down, as far as, you know, when the financial statements need to be submitted, and that, you know, there is sort of a delay in disclosure, for whatever reason. And 2020 in particular, I think, was tough for the town clerk and the town because of COVID. You know, the town office wasn't open for a while, so there was just some problems, I think, with getting a high percentage of compliance with the statement because of that issue. So, in reviewing the language, it looked, you know, pretty unclear as to what the process should be, so that piece of it you know, was a big topic of discussion. We did have the town attorney's input, who did revise, this is revised by the town attorney based on the recommendations of the Board of Ethics members. So, that, I think, more clearly lays out a notification process that the town clerk can work with and have better success in getting a, you know, higher percentage of compliance with the financial statement disclosure. That's essentially it.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Sure.
Appreciate that. Council, any questions for Kevin? Questions, concerned, concerns? Looking at it here, looks pretty straightforward. Changes that needed to be made, and appreciate you guys taking the time to work on it, Kevin, and the commission, and the board, I mean.
Yep, and likewise, we appreciate all the help and input we got from many of the town members, including town manager, town clerk, and Jeff Dinafri.
Yeah, appreciate Jeff, and Eros and Kate helping out, too. Appreciate it.
For sure.
Okay, there's any other, no questions or comments? We'll go ahead and take a motion on this, on the changes to our proposed amendments to Board of Ethics policy.
Okay, sure, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt the proposed amendment suggested by the Board of Ethics to the ethic policy.
Thank you. Second on that?
I second the motion.
Thanks, Charlie. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you again, Kevin.
I thank you. Have a great night.
You too.
Agenda item number three is requesting a bid waiver for Leonard Engineering for development of two reports, EPA risk resiliency assessment, and emergency response plan documents. Either Ray Gerima or Mike Ahern is on the line.
Good evening. This is Ray Gerima.
Hey, Brad.
Hi. American Water Infrastructure Act 2018, which is a federal act, requires us to come up with a resiliency risk association or a program and an emergency plan. We currently have an agreement with Leonard to do a water supply plan, and several of those elements are included in the water supply plan, so it makes sense to include them to do the work. We went out and outreach to another consultant, and it cost almost three times as much as what Leonard was proposing.
Thanks. Okay, that's great. Great to hear. Okay, any other any questions on this from the council? For Ray? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and take a motion on this.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Luddy here. I move to authorize the town manager to give the bidding requirements and award Leonard Engineering the contract to prepare two reports to meet the American Water Infrastructure Act for an amount not to exceed $12,000, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Great, thank you. Second on that?
Councilor Prunusai, second it.
Thanks, Charlie. Any other comments or questions? Okay, motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray, while you're here. Charlie, didn't we have, I don't see it in the packet, but isn't there a, there's this, an award?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was gonna cover it under the town manager's report.
Oh, let's mention it while Ray is, in case he misses it.
Yep.
Oh, I won't miss it.
Ray said six cups of coffee just to wait up for this meeting.
Whatever it takes, actually.
Wait, we can wait, Ray, as long as you're, you'll stay on until our, well, I don't know, you wanna stay?
I will, I will, I promise.
Okay. It might be a while, but that's okay.
As long as our phone holds out, I'm on it.
I'll be here to do it, Mr. Mayor, if you want.
Well, let's do it. Now, why? I don't want to interrupt your point, you know.
So, you should, let's see if I can find it in my material here. There was a there was a certificate. So, most of the, I think, all the councils received this. The Berlin Water Control Commission received a water fluoridation quality award from the US Department of Health and Human Services for disease control and prevention. I'd like to acknowledge the members of the Water Control Commission, who selflessly give their time, expertise, by serving on the commission. The staff of the Water Control, Charles Statwoski, Michael Statwoski, Michael Mendoza, Bill Gornfried, now these are the boots in the ground who actually make things happen. And of course, Ray Gerima, manager of Water Control, for his leadership. The certificate itself, you read, it says the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention commence this water system for its consistent and professional adjustment of fluoride content to the recommended level for oral health for 12 consecutive months in 2019. High-quality water fluoridation, as demonstrated by this water system, is safe and effective method to prevent food decay and the oral health of all community residents. So, this is an honor for us to have, knowing that all of you are drinking clean water, and also you're gonna have beautiful teeth when you smile. Thanks to our water control team, right here.
I'd just like to mention that this is, in the last five or six years, they've actually had a perfect fluoridation record. As far as I've been here, and as you recall, and I have the smallest of all roles. These gentlemen also, as you recall, have to do water and sewer work, so it's an extra added function that they do, and they do it very well.
Well, thank you, Ray. We certainly appreciate it, on behalf of the town and the work you put in. I know you put in a lot of time and effort into this position, as well as the Water Control Commission, and obviously, one of the most important things we have is our drinking water to be safe, and so we appreciate it, and congratulations on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Agenda item number four, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to table this item.
Okay.
So, this is a, if you recall, the December bond commission meeting, because of the leadership of our speaker, Joe Alsimovit, Berlin received $2.7 million for the Skaglia Field, Sage One restroom, storage facility, Sage Park Entrance Road, Scalise scoreboard. You know, the staff and everybody's, you gotta visit it there. Beautiful.
I do.
The staff and they were anxious to, you know, get moving on it, but we have not received the official grant documentation from the agency, and Kevin Delaney contacted them, and then they have informed us that you better not spend a single nickel until you actually get this, because if you do spend anything before we get the letter, it won't be eligible for reimbursement. So, let's table it. And as soon as Deep gets us the award letter, grant award letter, we'll bring it back for discussion.
Okay, thanks, Eros. And I know we're all anxious to to get going on this project, and it's great we've got the funding, but yes, we don't wanna risk not getting reimbursed for starting the project. I know we'll get it going as soon as we can, so appreciate that. Okay.
That's the agenda number four.
Yes.
This is the last agenda item we have. It's the Human Trafficking Vanish Month. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, and I know Melissa wanted to speak.
Yes, so we got to this quickly, as I thought we would, so Yes. So, uh, we, uh, we got to this, uh, quickly, as I thought we would. So, um, Melissa, you've been waiting patiently. I appreciate you waiting till we got to the topic. So if you'd like to go ahead and we'll kind of reopen the audience of citizens for your, uh, for your comments.
Um, thank you, Karen Mark. I just wanted to, um, thank you guys so much for, um, proclamation, um, that Berlin is making with regards to Human Trafficking Awareness Month. I think this is a much bigger issue statewide than people recognize. Um, I professionally, I work for DCF and I serve as the Human Trafficking Awareness Team Liaison for Region Six, which is the New Britain catchment area which Berlin falls in. And I've been doing this work for about five years now, um, engaging youth in prevention programs and educating our professionals on what to, um, how to understand and detect, um, what child sex trafficking looks like. In my experience, um, and the statistics are showing that on average, we are getting 208 cases a year of confirmed victims of sex trafficking. It's happening statewide. It's happening in every county across the state, regardless of socioeconomic status, race, ethnicity, education level. Um, we're seeing it in every community. Um, what we see is that, uh, the most surprising statistic people know, hear is that 63% of kids are be, are living at home with a parent or guardian at the time they're being trafficked or exploited. Um, I think there's this misnomer out there that a lot of the kids that are being trafficked, um, and exploited are in foster care, or are runaways, or are juvenile justice-involved youth. And that's not what our statistics are showing. With, um, especially this year with COVID and education turning into, uh, virtual format and all kids being, you know, provided Chromebooks, um, we're finding that traffickers have much more access to our children than ever before. And we're finding that parents don't know what to look for, professionals are struggling to identify it, and kids are struggling to understand that they're actually being taken advantage of. And so, you know, I've had to work with several survivors that didn't see themselves as victims initially, um, thought it was a choice and failed to understand what was happening. Um, I have to give Berlin a lot of credit, Erin McGurk and Brian Benigni especially, who have, um, really embraced the, um, the state statute out there, um, that requires teachers to be educated annually. They had provided the forum for us to do that. And then they had welcomed us into the classroom. We've been doing our not-in-number prevention curriculum with the ninth graders for the last two years, and they've been phenomenal. Um, and I think that a lot of this, a lot of the discomfort about talking about this comes from us as adults. Our kids are a lot more willing to accept this information and have dialogue about it. It's us as adults that are uncomfortable talking about it. Um, so as a town, I think Berlin's, you know, leading the way in the way that we're trying to educate our children. Now we need to take this next step and educate the parents and us as leaders in the community about what to see and how to engage people and how to stop the sexual exploitation of children. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. Um, I am doing a presentation for parents at McGee Middle School on Tuesday, February 4th at 6:30. Um, I'm still confirming the time with Sal, but that's the time we set up, uh, tentatively. So we're gonna go with, that's, hopefully that's gonna stay the same. But I will confirm with town council, um, once I know definitively.
Okay, great. Thanks, Melissa. Appreciate that. And I appreciate you, uh, putting on the class there coming up. I know you did one, uh, you did one last year that I actually attended at, you had, it was at the, uh, one of the parents, the PTA Advisory Council, I think, meeting, whatever. But, um, yeah, no, it's good. I don't think, uh, obviously, parents are probably not aware. We, I think we think human trafficking, I mean, there's a lot of different forms of it, but certainly, uh, the things that affect our, uh, citizens here in Berlin is important to make sure they, you know, they know about it and what to look for. So, um...
Mark, if I could, if I could just, um, say something. A friend of mine that I graduated high school with and still keep in touch with, um, Raymond Bichard, is, um, an author and an advocate and activist with respect to this issue. He's traveled all over the world. He's traveled to Afghanistan and has educated troops there on what human trafficking and, uh, commercial sexual exploitation looks like. He's presented to the Pope at the Vatican. He's even presented to elementary, um, school-aged children in, you know, the best way that you can possibly educate them, um, as to, as to what, you know, something like this looks like. But he's also written a really, really, uh, interesting book. And it's this right here. It's called, um, "The Berlin Turnpike: A True Story of Human Trafficking in America." And it centers around the 2007, um, trial of Dennis Paris, who was convicted of trafficking, um, underage girls, uh, out of Weatherfield, Newington, Berlin, uh, and Hartford. And, um, but it's also pretty cool because it gives, um, not only, uh, information about the trial, but it has a really cool history of the Berlin Turnpike from its inception when it was just a gravel road between Boston and New York City. So it's, um, it's very, very interesting. There's even some residents here in town that are quoted in it, like Eddie Gazarian and Antoinette Pager and, but, um, but it's very, very informative if anybody wants to, uh, know anything else about, about the subject. And thank you, Melissa.
Hey, and if I may, sorry, um, Melissa had shared with me a statistic, um, that Berlin was, um, in one of the top five locations in the state, um, as a hotspot, um, per DCF's data, um, for, for trafficking. So that's, um, partly why I wanted to bring this issue, um, to you guys, because this, this is a problem there. Um, and it's seemingly a pretty big problem. Um, so whatever we can all do together, um, to educate the public, to educate, you know, parents and, and students and, and even like business owners, um, you know, whatever we need to do. Um, I think that's something that's worthwhile and valuable for all of us to do.
Thank you. No, I agree. Um, and, uh, as we know, I mean, certainly, it's, uh, hard to think of that right here in our town of Berlin that we have these problems. But unfortunately, whatever crime we're talking about is, is here and is everywhere. And, uh, you know, was kind of involved in my earlier career when I was in California. I used to work by the border, by the Mexican border. And, um, so it happened, you know, just coming across the border. People were, were trafficked, uh, not only human trafficking, but of course, they were carrying drugs with them too, with the people that we got involved with. But it was, uh, a horrible thing to see. And, uh, you know, it's, uh, everywhere in the world. And, um, we just have to be aware of it here in our town and do the best we can, obviously, to, uh, to find it and stop it here. So, uh, appreciate all the information. And with that, we'll go ahead and read, uh, what we are, just, uh, to make our town, uh, aware of this. Uh, whereas human trafficking is a form of modern slavery that occurs in every state, including Connecticut, wherein victims are forced to work in various forms of labor exploitation, including but not limited to commercial sex acts and other services that are reduced through force, fraud, or coercion. Due to, uh, due to its isolated and discreet nature, many individuals across the globe are unaware that trafficking exists in their communities. And it is estimated that more than 40 million people around the world are victims of human trafficking. Uh, increased education about how to identify human trafficking along with increased knowledge of resources and services for those affected by criminal exploitation can help decrease the number of future victims. The citizens of Berlin stand against this practice and will support our police department in taking steps and any necessary action to stop this practice. Human Trafficking Awareness Month is an opportunity to recognize the critical role of all citizens of Berlin, uh, that, that they play in preventing and reporting these crimes. So we do, do hereby recognize the Berlin Town Council, uh, January 2021, as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the town of Berlin, and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. So, thank you for that. And, um, it's, again, just another thing that our town needs to be aware of. And, uh, and, uh, you know, it all, it all works, uh, when everybody, uh, helps out. And if anyone obviously has any suspicions or any, anything they wanna talk about as far as this goes, please contact the Berlin PD. They are aware of it. They have been involved in a human trafficking task force in the past, although it is disbanded at the moment. But, uh, they have, they are aware of, uh, what, what goes on in, in town, uh, in this, uh, arena. So, thank you very much. Um, okay. So we're on to appointments now, right?
We have a motion on, that we have to read here for this, right?
Uh, no, I don't think so. If we just, well, no, I don't think we need a motion on that, right? No. Uh, just making everybody aware of it. So, um, we're on to appointments, correct? Where, where are all these appointments? Oh, it's on another sheet, huh? Okay.
There's a thick, uh, packet of material I think Kate gave.
Right.
The copies are there. You can find it.
Yeah, let me get to that. Uh, what are we at here? So we have, okay, here we are. I was just looking for the start of it here. So Kate, I know you, you, um, prepared that, some, some notes, right? Also?
Yes.
Um, but we just, I guess we'll just start going through our appointments, right? If you can, could help us with that. A large, a large number of them. If we can, uh, get through them as fast as we can. If there's any questions, you know, we'll, we'll hold off. I know sometimes we have this big amount for this meeting. Um, you know, sometimes we come up with questions and we can, we can hold some till the next, you know, till the next, uh, meeting if need be. If we have any questions or concerns. So I guess the first one now is our library board, right? Yes. So on these, Kate, what do we, what do we have here? We have...
You had either Gail Marino or Jane Skinner. Both of them are Republicans, and both of them have submitted an application for the vacancy.
Okay. Uh, so we have two? Do we, I, I guess when we have two and if there's no necessary, uh... What, is the one filed before the other one? I guess that's what we kind of go with if we've got two competing, uh, who, who, who got their application in first? I guess that's the only way I can figure out to differentiate.
Um, Gail did.
Okay.
And I think too is that, um, Helen Malinka, um, knows her as a patron of the library and, um, is very, um, impressed with her background and her use of the library.
Okay.
Um, just so I, I can tell you, Jane is on the Friends of the Library.
Okay.
There's already maybe some involvement there.
Okay. Um, yeah, I know, I, I hate, you know, I know they're both wanted. And that's, that's, that's wonderful. We have that. I, I don't know any other way to differentiate them, right? I guess Kate, what have we done in the past? I think that's what we've done, right, with some of them?
Yep. Well, it's always good to get someone new.
Yeah. So, so Gail, right? And so I'll take nominations for the, uh...
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Luddy here. I will nominate Gail Marino for the library board.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none? We'll go ahead and close that nomination for that seat. And all those in favor, Gail? Aye?
Aye.
Closed? Okay. Uh, Gail, Gail, it is. Congratulations. And, uh, what do we got next here?
Everybody's left has an application, so we might as well just go down the list, right?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
So for the next, the library board, I'll nominate Lilian Ulan.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none? Then close the nominations, take a vote on Lilian. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, Lilian. And...
And for the next spot, uh, Councilor Luddy here, I'll nominate Chris Fassiano.
Thank you. Uh, any other nominations for this spot? Hearing none? We'll close the nominations for this seat. All those in favor, Chris? Aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Lastly, for the last library, I will nominate Donna Moore.
Thank you very much. Any other nominations for this spot? Hearing none? Close the nominations. All those in favor, Donna? Aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, that's, uh, all for that one. Go down to the next one. I would have got the cemetery, uh, commission.
Yep.
Committee. So go ahead and take a, take a nomination.
Sure. The cemetery commission, I will nominate Charles Coloresi.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much for that. Uh, any other nominations for this spot? Hearing none? But I'm closing nominations. All those in favor of Charles? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, next one?
Next cemetery commission, I will nominate Edward Hahn Cole Jr.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other nominations for that spot? And I'm gonna close, close the nominations. And vote for, all those in favor of Edward? Aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay. What do we got now? The Central Regional Tourism District?
This is a tough one.
It's tough. Who's this, who's this Kate, Kate Wall lady? What does she, what does she, uh, want?
Okay.
We'll go ahead and take a nomination.
Okay. I will nominate, uh, Kate Wall for the Central Regional Tourism District.
Right. Uh, any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none? We'll go ahead and close those nominations. All those in favor, Kate? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Aye, aye, Kate. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Okay, we're down to the commission for persons with disabilities.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I will nominate, uh, Robert Dombrowski for the first spot here.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none? We'll close nominations. All those in favor, Robert? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, now we have, uh...
For the next spot, I will nominate, uh, Marlon Matassa.
Thank you. Any other, uh, nominations for that spot? Hearing none. Close the nominations. All, all those in favor, Mario? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mario, I'm sorry. Smudged.
Oh, all right, yeah.
Marlo.
Is it Marlo?
Marlo.
Oh, is it Marlo? Sorry.
Yes, Marlo.
Sorry for that.
That's how I read it.
Oh, yeah. It looks like an eye. Well, I guess I need stronger glasses. That's the problem. Apologize for that. Uh, okay, so, uh, we are on to our, uh, Conservation Commission. Take a nomination.
For the Conservation Commission alternate, I will nominate Mary Catherine Rose.
Thank you. Uh, any further nominations?
A little delay there.
For that spot? Hearing none?
For the first Conservation Commission, I'll nominate Kathy. Mary. Okay. Got a little stutter there.
We got it. We got it. Okay. All right, so, uh, we close the nominations to Mary Catherine. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It's my wife, I think.
Thank you. Um, next, uh, Conservation Commission.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I will nominate the next Conservation Commission alternate, Karen Pagliaro.
Thank you. Uh, any other nominations for that seat? Hearing none? Go ahead and close the nominations. All those in favor, Karen? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Welcome Karen back. Thank you. All right, so where are we at now? Economic Development, all right?
Yes.
Okay. Are we okay here, Kate? We have any problems with... We have any problems with? We have enough vacancies or?
We're all set.
Yeah, you're all set for, if you want to reappoint Peter Campanelli.
Yeah.
And Chris Popola, you can.
Okay, all right. We'll go ahead and take nominations.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I will nominate Peter Campanelli for the first spot in economic development.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations for this seat? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, all those in favor of Peter? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Second economic development.
The second spot, I will nominate Christopher Capola.
Thank you. Close, close those nominations for that seat. And all those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Where we at here? Are we at the golf, we at the golf commission now?
Yes, and you can reappoint Peter and Jim if you want. And then the number 18, there was somebody who submitted an application. I think I sent it to you yesterday.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah.
We're good.
Oh, good, okay, we're good, okay, that's great. Okay, so we'll go ahead and take the.
Sure, for the first golf commission, I will nominate Peter Defazio.
Thank you. Any other nominations for this seat? Hearing none, we'll close nominations, all those in favor of Peter? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, so moved, thank you. Number two on the golf commission.
Sure, and the next spot, I will nominate James Pugella for the golf commission.
All right, thank you very much. Other nominations on this seat? We'll go and close the nominations, and all those in favor of James? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The last one, Mr. Mayor, I will nominate Joe Pulcini.
Yes, okay, thank you very much. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close that. Nomination, all those in favor of Joe? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay. Where are we at now?
Okay, with the historic district, gonna be some shuffling around.
Okay.
Two of the regular members would now like to be alternates. The alternates would like to be full members. So.
Okay.
If you could, please put. I want to make sure I get this right. And it would be, for the first one is a vacancy. And we would, if you could put Herb Watson in there.
Okay, so the first one here, so that one's Herb Watson on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. The first one would be Richard Bennett.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so let's take a nominee, can we take a nomination on this one?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I will nominate Richard Bennett for the historic district commission.
Thank you. Any other nominations for that seat? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the nominations, all those in favor of Richard, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. What do we got next, Kate? What do we?
Okay, so then the next one's going to be where, it would be Herb Watson for that one.
Go ahead, Brendan.
Okay, I will nominate Herb Watson for the second spot in historic district commission.
Thank you. Any other nominations for that seat? Hearing none. Go ahead and close the nominations on that one, all those in favor of Mr. Watson? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Any opposed? I'm sorry. Okay. What do we got next now?
For the alternate, next alternate position, it would be Andra.
Okay.
I will nominate Andra Wulnner for the historic district commission alternate.
Okay. Thank you. Any other nominations for that seat? Hearing none, close those nominations, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that, just so everybody knows, at the next meeting, there will be an alternate position open, and Amy can fill that one.
Okay. Oh, okay, good, okay.
So that kind of brings that all up. Everybody will be happy.
So we're straight on that now, everything's good, Kate?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so where are we at now? In the wetlands?
You're gonna do the, yeah, the town historian?
Mr. Mayor, for the town historian, I will nominate Kathleen Murray.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations for that? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved, thank you. I got ahead of myself here. Where are we at now?
Now you have inland wetlands.
Okay.
And you can put Michael back on and Peter.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, for the first inland wetlands, I will nominate Michael Casetta.
Thank you. Any other further nominations for this seat? None. Close the nominations, those in favor, Michael? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, for the second inland wetlands, I will nominate Peter Neiman.
Yes, thank you very much. Any other nominations for that seat? Hearing none. Those in favor, Peter? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. What do we got? We got another one?
No.
We have an open one.
That's it for that one, okay.
And same thing for the alternate position. So now you can drop down to the parks and recreation.
Park and rec, okay. Okay. So we, okay, so we've got our first nomination.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I will nominate Donna Bovee for the Parks and Rec Commission.
Thank you. Any other nominations for this seat? Hearing none. All those in favor, Donna? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. What else we have here now? Second one's good, right, Kate? We're good?
Yes.
For the second spot, Mr. Mayor, I'll nominate Andrew Legnani.
All right, thank you very much. Any other nominations for this seat? Hearing none, go ahead and close the nomination. All those in favor? Andrew? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And for the last one, I will nominate Greg Starr for the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other nominations for this seat? Hearing none. All those in favor of Greg? Aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, what do we have? Planning and zoning now?
Yes.
All right, so go ahead and. Where are we here? Take the first nomination for planning and zoning?
Yeah, Joan Beely.
Joan Beely, okay.
Got it, it's mixed up here.
Yeah, this is mixed up, okay.
Okay. I will nominate Joan Beely for planning and zoning.
Thank you very much. Any other nominations for that slot? Hearing none. Nominations, all those in favor of Joan? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. A and A? All right, we're all set on Joan? Congratulations on that. What we got here now?
On the next one. Excuse me. Mr. Holtman does not want to be reappointed.
Okay.
So you can either, you can do a couple, you can either go ahead and put Peter back on, or you can fill the vacancy with, there's two people that put it in for planning and zoning. George Millard, Milton put it in, he's currently the alternate. And then Andrew Legnani put an application in as a second choice for planning and zoning.
So, all right, let's, I guess we do George, because George was an alter, he's an alternate on there now, right?
Yep. Yep. You can just move him up.
We'll move him up.
Mr. Mayor, I will nominate George Millard for the planning and zoning.
Thank you very much. Any other nominations for this spot? Hearing none. George, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And what do we, so.
And then you can put Peter.
I will nominate Peter Zabazo back on the planning and zoning commission. Alter.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none. All those in favor, Peter? Aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Is that it, Kate? No other?
Yes.
Okay. So all the, all the alternates are filled on planning and zoning?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, Andrew, we gave him.
I take that back. There's gonna be a new one.
New alternate?
We're gonna need it because of George's, George moving up.
Oh, okay, well.
Right?
Yeah.
But until George moves up, there's not a vacancy.
Okay, so keep that in mind for Andrew there. If he applies, if he wants that one. Okay, so we are at the veterans commission, right?
Yes.
So, Kate, let me ask you this. Is there, so there's a bunch of people here. Is there enough spots or?
Yes, because we had a couple vacancies.
Okay.
So one of the. Well, there's really two commissioners that left. So both of them are, the vacancies that you see is numbered 36 and 37, I think. So you should fill those vacancies first.
Okay.
And then you can put in the regular members that have been on, you know, Charles and Thomas and Robert.
Okay, so there's, there's room for everyone that.
Yes.
Okay, because I, I usually defer to Charles. I didn't know if there was enough spaces. I kind of let them, you know, tell me what they're interested in, but that's good, so.
So Charlie and I spoke this morning, and he's all aware of the, he has a great control over the veterans commission and the cemetery commission. And he's all set. Paul's gonna go back on, and Dean Rivera is young. So he's great because it is some of the younger veterans involved.
Good, sure. Excellent. Good. Happy to hear that. Okay, so we'll go ahead, Brendan.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, for the veterans commission number one, I will nominate Paul Schu.
Thank you very much. Any other, any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none, close the nominations, all those in favor, Paul? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Number two?
For the second spot, Mr. Mayor, I will nominate Dean Mvoir.
Thank you very much. Any other nominations for that spot? None. Close that, close the nominations, all those in favor of Dean? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. For three?
Continuing, Mr. Mayor, I will nominate Charles Coloresi for the next spot of the veterans commission.
Thank you. For that spot? Close that nomination, all those in favor of Charles? Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Charles does do an outstanding job with their commission, and so do all the members. Next one on the veterans.
Sure, next one, I will nominate Thomas Zansky.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none. Nominations, all those in favor, Thomas? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
And for the last spot, Mr. Mayor, I will nominate Mr. Robert Smith.
All right, thank you very much. Any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none, close the nominations, all those in favor, Robert? Aye? Okay, thank you very much. So where are we at? V and A now?
Yep.
V and A, here. All right, so. Okay, I guess the first one?
You only have one, right?
There's only one, right? Yeah.
So I guess the first one, I will nominate Barbara Chira.
Brenda Chira.
Brenda, right? Brenda?
Yes, Brenda.
Brenda, Brenda.
Got it. Brenda. Thank you very much. Any other nominations for this spot? Hearing none, close the nominations, all those in favor of Brenda? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. What do we have? Water control? Yes. Water control permission. Go ahead and take the first nomination.
Sure.
We just have one?
We only have one.
One, yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
So Kate, we skip the first one and just keep Bill on the same spot for the same term?
No. Unfortunately, he has to take the small, the lesser term.
Okay. For the vacancy in the alternate in the water commission, I will nominate Bill Filpon.
Okay, thank you, Brendan. Any other nominations for this spot? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Congratulations, Bill. And what do we have? Zoning Board of Appeals?
You're a TPA now, yes.
TPA, and what, what do we have? Here we go.
So Sandy wants to go back on, Ryan wants to go back on, and Hunter wants to go back on.
Okay, all right. And we have spots, obviously, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so we'll go ahead and take the first motion.
Kate, for the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Mayor, I'll nominate Sandra Coppola.
Thank you very much. Any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none. Go ahead and close that nomination, all those in favor of Sandra? Aye?[1624.14]
Aye.
Aye.
Number two?
For the alternate, I will nominate Ryan Zealick.
Thank you, uh, any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor of Ryan, aye?
Aye. Aye.
For the last alternate spot, I will nominate Hunter Mathina.
Thank you, uh, any other nomination for that spot? Hearing none? Close the nominations, all those in favor of Hunter, aye?
Aye.
Right, uh, thank you. Well, that was quite the workout.
If I may, Mayor, twenty years ago.
Yes.
Um, that was my first meeting here, is doing all these appointments.
Really?
Yes, and it was quite the introduction to, um, my, my job here.
Hey, I bet it was a fun time twenty years ago, yeah.
It was much nicer tonight, thank you.
Well, you did a great job, I know it's difficult, and, you know, it's always this meeting, 'cause we have them all together, but you know what, I, I, you know, thank you to all the volunteers that stepped up and wanna be on a commission, we, we know, as we always said, now, as we are all volunteers, they, you know, volunteers run the town here, um, I mean, our staff runs it day-to-day, we know that, but, uh, you know, all these boards of commissions, uh, put in a lot of work in their various, uh, subjects, and, uh, we do it without people stepping forward, so, we certainly appreciate everybody, uh, wanting to, uh, be part of it, and whoever we couldn't find a position for, I hope we can, you know, there's other positions open on different commissions, right, Kate, still, so, maybe we can contact these people and see if they'd be interested in something else to, uh, to help out the town, um, since they wanna volunteer. Alright, so, that's great, uh, okay, on to our Town Manager's Report.
Alright, back on schedule.
How we doing?
We're doing great.
Yeah?
Yeah. So, few updates for you, and then I'll give you an opportunity to ask any questions you may have. I provided a, uh, department update, um, to you, uh, I'm not gonna go over all the departments, pretty much talks about, you know, how, what happened during the first six months of the year, as you can see, most of them have a different spin on how they operate because of COVID environment, um, to keep the, uh, towns, you know, up business going. But I, I do wanna, uh, point out one item and also congratulate the team, uh, the Building Department, um, they went live with MuniCity, which is the online building application system on January eighteenth. This is the future, this is a fantastic way to move forward, um, this allows residents, businesses, to apply for any kind of permit with the Building Department online, they can take pictures, attach to it, application forms, anything. And then also, they can make the payments online, and also, right now, if you're doing it manually, they come to the Building Department, then they find out they haven't paid taxes, and Building Department has to fill out a form, it goes to the other side, and they gotta pay the taxes, if you don't pay the taxes, you can't move forward, none of that stuff, they could, the application pretty much doesn't move forward, so they could go, take care of their property taxes, whatever taxes they owe, get back on, and submit the application. And I, I mentioned this before, you know, to me, customer service is an important component of what we do, but I think part of customer service is also to help customers help themselves. Contractors, builders would say, they would rather do these applications and permitting, application process from their kitchen table, when they don't have to be on site. From, you know, seven o'clock in the morning till seven in the evening, uh, people wanna actually get worked up, not to spend time with the, you know, lovely people at the town hall, they're nice people, but they wanna get worked up. So, uh, like anything else, there might be some growing pains, but Frank and his team work really hard with IT folks, with the vendor, uh, finance folks, to integrate all these applications, uh, and it's going well. Even before we went live, we had about two dozen, we tested, um, first of all, we did it manually here, but then we also had people do it, um, online, and it's working well, so. This is, uh, you know, a, a, as we move forward, especially this pandemic has, uh, opened, or allowed us to open our eyes and do, look at things differently, and, uh, perhaps we can move a lot of these other things online as well. Uh, I wanna give you, if you haven't, I don't know if you have had a chance to look at it, if you look at our website, the community center, under Spotlight, there is a video, it's done beautifully by, um, the, uh, Public Building Commission, they put it out there. Uh, Q and A, there's a beautiful introduction, you should actually look at it, it's a nice 3D tour that goes around, and shows this is, you know, ideally, we would have had a public forums to get feedback and all that, but with the COVID environment, we can't do it. We're gonna still try and do, if we can, the second time around, but what we are asking people to do is to look at it, comment, this is only as good as what people, um, see and what, what they want, and they can ask their questions and submit it to the project website. Um, and Q and A has done a really good job, if you go and look at it, there's also FAQs, what they're doing is, as they get these questions, they are turning, turning them into FAQ, so that everybody else can see what everybody else is submitting, and keep responding to the community as we go through it. They are still, uh, hoping, uh, at least the second round, to see, uh, see if we can get a public forum, but if not, we'll turn this bit virtually. But if you, if you have time, please do and take a look at it, it's, it's something worthwhile, it's really cool, I, I think, uh, what they have done. I wanna give you, uh, an update on the Berlin High School duck work project.
Uh, yeah.
Um, so, a little bit of history, uh, this has been going on for almost three years, and, Mr. Mayor, you, uh, got a group together, the Board of Fed, Public Building Commission, and we said we'll go and hire a third independent party, for them to come and look at it, and whatever they say, we'll get it done, and so that we could close the project and also get over three million dollars in the drainage we have. Um, so, um, we, uh, we did that, and, um, you probably recall when we did that, we hired a group, uh, called, uh, what's their name here, Innovative Construction and Design Services, that's the group that we hired, um, Adam, um, and, um, Adam Salina and Don Lombardo, myself, Doug, and Jeff Kugno, worked as a core team to work with them. Uh, went and did all their work, came back, gave us a report, uh, it's about a sixty-page report, and the same group reviewed it. It, it, I'll give you the thirty-second soundbite, it pretty much says, there are three options, we also asked them to quantify the ROI, so rather than saying, go spend money, tell them if you spend money, what will you get in return? So, you know, they, they pretty much, they, they are, the a, analysis says that, you know, based on the code at that time, the project was completed, according to code. Uh, but at the same time, they have, um, given us some direction in terms of whether, what the jacketing would do, and, um, jacketing would obviously, you know, give a, give us some savings in the long run with energy, and also the, uh, extend the lifespan of the, uh, the duck work that is out there. So, in, in their recommendation, they estimate, for about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, you can, we should more go ahead and do the metal jacketing. Don Lombardo doesn't think it's gonna be three thirty, he thinks, you know, it's not gonna be one point four million, like they had initially said, but maybe about five, six hundred thousand dollars. He has advised us to do, and we are, and we'll bring this to you for the agenda item next time, to actually go out and put a bid out there and get some pricing to get the jacketing done.
Oh.
They also have given a ROI, for the three thirty, they say thirty-three thousand dollars a year that you would save, and so in ten years, you would pretty much pay yourself back. Um, but, you know, we'll give you the complete report and everything so that you can look at it for the next meeting, uh, but we, I, I do think we need to move forward with this, and, um, actually, the, what they're recommending is much rather than what we anticipated, um, needs to be done. Just wanna give you, uh, the, update on planning for the fiscal twenty-two budget, there were two areas that, uh, needed some, uh, review and adjustment, based on what we went through last year, one was Timbaland Golf, and the second one, uh, was the VNA. You probably remember, there was a change that was made in the leadership at Timbaland, um, the Director of Golf resigned. Uh, what we have done for the next year is not fill that position, Jerry Salvio will continue to work as the Acting Director, but we would hire another person at the grounds, it'll save a good amount of money for the budget. Uh, Jerry also did a really, uh, nice job with, uh, looking, taking a look at the, look at the fees for next year, which he submitted to the Golf Commission last Thursday, there's a lot of discussion about it, but we're gonna bring it back, that this model will allow the, uh, uh, revenues to actually cover all the expenses, but I also want to go back to what we had discussed before, um, since, you know, we can't solve all the problems within the next month or two, take this one year, at least for the next six months, really look at the golf, Timbaland Golf, um, program itself. Um, and I, I come back to the question that we as a town should answer, which is to ask, A, do you want the, um, you know, golf fees and all to be priced at a market rate, uh, be competitive, and pretty much operate as an enterprise fund, and any money that you may put back to it, or do you want to subsidize, but we charge the residents specially, and, uh, have the, whatever the gap to be covered by the taxpayers? So, we, these conversations need to take place, but you have a year to do that, but we will submit the budget next year, that would, uh, be true to the ordinance.
Okay, I, I, I thought, remember, uh, the end of last year, so, we were gonna get, try and get, uh, the, now holidays came, but we were gonna try and get a working group together, remember with the, uh, the Golf Commission and the Council, if we could find some time, uh, going forward, the next couple months, right, to maybe.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'll do, yeah.
Yeah, and so, you know, just because, remember, we were gonna, remember, we were gonna do a separate commission, and we just said, that's just adds to the, you know, to, to the confusion.
Yeah.
Seeing as how really the Golf Commission, they're kinda been studying this, and, and the Council would have to make the ultimate decision, so, we could sit together a couple nights, you know, I don't know, February, March, whatever, just an hour or so with them, with the Council, and, you know, figure out, have some discussions, right, before we.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, I'm, that, that's in the cards, um, I didn't think we could come up with a, a solution within the next month, before the budget is completed.
Right.
But let's get the group get together.
Yeah.
But it is important that we answer these fundamental questions as to what we, how we want to structure, um, the operations of the golf course.
Right.
Um, because operation is just one aspect of it, and, you know, I, uh, we sit at the golf course, and I've asked Doug to help us with some of the, uh, renovations they have, it carpeting is in horrible shape, it, it doesn't look like a, a decent place when you walk in, paint's chipped all over the place, and it's, it's nobody's fault, we just need to have a mechanism to fund it. And how we do it, we need to discuss, you know, if we put everything on the table, whether you wanna outsource certain aspects of it, I'll, we'll outsource the entire operation, you also need to talk about the pricing, uh, and we've done a good comparison to other courses, so, um, let's have the conversation, and, but I think it's important we answer that, and then come up with a, a solution to, uh, you know, to move it in that direction.
Yeah, that's great, because I think it has to, right, it has to start erosion, and Council with, you know, some, some philosophical question, right, just to.
Right, right.
Which way we're thinking of going, and, uh, then we'll, uh, we, we can move on from there, so, okay, yeah, if we can set that up, maybe in February sometime, some.
Absolutely.
Figure out when most people are available, and, again, we're not gonna make any decisions there, but just have the discussion, and then, you know, we, we can bring it back to the Council, you know, at a Council meeting to.
Alright, um, so the VNA, th- this is another one, there were a couple of areas when I first started, more than one person came and said that you, you need to take a look at it, it's a problem, town's losing money, gotta do something about it. Um, but the charter says we need to, um, provide a VNA for our resident, residents. So, um, I asked, uh.
Sorry.
Wendy to, um, take a look at the operation, COVID was also a challenge, we got nurses who got COVID, and we, uh, our census numbers went down to the forties, uh, it's back to the sixties or so. So what we plan to do, and, uh, it's already in the budget, working with Wendy, between now and June thirtieth, to eliminate three positions. A one nurse, a one nurse's aide, and a administrative position, salaries and benefits will save about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's, that's what we are planning right now. Um, that will allow us to maintain the census, we have, what we're pretty much doing is to bring down the expenses to support this level of census that we have had for the past year or so. If, in a year, things turn around, and we can get the census up to eighty-nine or a hundred, we can revisit adding staff, but I would rather give staff enough time and, and make that adjustment through attrition, rather than waiting till June thirtieth and say, we are eliminating positions. So, um, that has, um, been discussed, uh, Wendy has discussed that with the staff, and I'll be meeting with the staff this Thursday to go over what we are planning to do. And this has also come as a, um, strong directive from the Board of Finance, um, to make some changes in the VNA, especially not to lose close to a million dollars in, in revenues, to try and bring it down, it has been going up each year, and it is really unfortunate what happened last year with the, with COVID nineteen, and, uh, we lost patients because we just couldn't serve them, then we also lost staff because they got sick, it was not a good place to be. So, I just don't want you to be surprised when that goes out to the Board of Finance, and when we submit the budget, the Town Manager's Budget, I will, that's the plan that we have currently for the VNA. Um, and finally, I wanna talk about the vaccine. Is everybody excited about getting the vaccine?
Yep.
Um, so, uh, good news is, this is, it's nice when you get it locally, right, the, the Priority One A, everybody in the VNA, the PD, the, uh, EMTs, uh, Fire Department, Fire Marshal, all of them have gotten both, or at least got one, and so they are getting the vaccines, which is great. Uh, so getting to two B, this is the over seventy-fives, and then teachers and essential staff, um, it is in the works, you know, you, so we have, remember when we had the COVID, we had a website dedicated to COVID that had all information, I'm reopening that, if you're under the spotlight, there's a place. And it's pretty much, right now, there is a, uh, link that takes you to the state website, it tells you all the places that you can go to, there's a Vaccination Administrative Management System called VAMs, that people can, uh, go and register, and go to these locations, uh, there is also a phone number that people can call, uh, to get an appointment, you do realize there's a lot more demand now than supply. People all over the country are frustrated because they're all trying to get appointments, and they're sort of queuing people up, and there's a, there's a line to get to it. But what we are doing with, uh, the Central Connecticut Health District, they believe by the first two weeks of February, they'll be able to get access to some number of vaccines, that they wanna work with the local towns to administer them, especially for the senior citizens and the over seventy-fives. So, uh, we have had a series of, Tina did some robocalls to inform people of what is happening with the state, and where to go, who to call, um, and, uh, so for example, not all seniors have access to a computer, so they can call, but if they can't even call, we have, we can set them up, even the United Way, um, has volunteered or set up to help people out with the setting up in the VAM system, but what we, um, have done is, maybe last ten days ago or so, uh, C, CHT came and visited the senior center, currently, their plan is to, when they get the vaccine, um, to come and give the vaccine out there to the senior citizens, because a lot of them don't have transportation to get to a lot of places, and frankly, a lot of them have said they would rather not go to Hartford or New Britain, they would like to get it in Berlin, so, we'll try to do the best we can, and then also, we've worked with the, uh, working with the schools, with Ryan, um, for the teachers and the essential workers to get the Berlin High School gymnasium as a place where we think we can use to vaccinate, uh, teachers and essential staff and others. Um, ideally, there should be, they would like, they would prefer to have a location that could be a drive-through, but we don't have a drive-through either location where you could just drive in, um, like what they have in downtown Hartford, right, you can just drive into those massive places, it's covered, uh, it'll work out well. And then, and, Mr. Mayor, thank you for forwarding that letter from Comcast.
Yep.
Comcast has said, you know, um, let us know if we can help, so I told Charlie, go ask them if we can find a place in their facility that a drive-through vaccination might work.
No, okay, great, that's right.
Right, so, i- it, we're putting these things in place, so that when they get a hundred vaccines for Berlin, we have a way to get it out to, uh, senior citizens, that's, that's the highest priority right now, because they don't have the capability to do this on their own, they don't feel comfortable going away from here, frankly, they don't have a way of, you know, finding transportation and all that, just one, one at a time. So, uh, more to come on that. So uh more to come on that, but but it's uh. It it, it's promising that, that when you see more people uh locally actually getting the vaccine. You know, that that it's, it's, it's a reality, which is good.
Yeah.
So that's all I have for updates. Uh I'll pause here and take any questions you may have.
Uh no, Roche, thanks for, I'm glad you're working on the vaccine stuff and yeah, that's great if Comcast could help, they, like you said, they offered uh that us, so if, you know, we need somebody uh to help us out. That's good, and uh, you know, I know the supply is still not there, but whatever we get, we get, right? And hopefully the supply will be uh increasing as we go from what it, from what we hear, right? So that's a, that's a good thing. Hey, what I, what, one other thing, whatever happened with the um. The police pension, uh remember we had our uh um our group there, our uh.
Yeah.
We, they were gonna look at it and get back to us at some point. They're gonna compare some different systems for us.
Yeah, it it's been a little slow. Uh uh I, they did say, you know, they couldn't really get. Rep all the actuarial, run the numbers before the holidays, but now it's after the holidays, we still haven't heard from them. So um, you know, light a fire under them. We, we have been working on two different um important items for the P D. One is the the pension.
Yeah.
Looking at that. And the second one is that there's a police, police retiree health account. That um is not being used properly and we are trying to uh repurpose that so that. All the officers who contributed to that can use it. It was set up in a strange way. Where if you retire, if you don't use it before sixty five, you lose it. So we're working with um uh with uh it it. With Shipman and Goodman to actually make sure that we are complying with what the intent of I R S. And can uh come up with a way still, still to use the money for that purpose.
Okay.
By taking the money and putting it back into the individual accounts uh to I C M A. So it's taking longer, but I think very soon we'll have a good resolution here.
Okay, and and remember, they're gonna, right, they're just gonna bring us some, uh they're, they were analyzing, I think, weren't they, the um actuaries that did the um. What was it, Branford Police Department?
Yeah, it's.
Reinstituted a, a pension, not, not that we're doing that, but I just, you know, that was one of the options we need to look at.
H and H, Hook and Hook, they're running the numbers, yeah, just taking longer to do the, your comparison.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
I got something for, for uh Roche. Um you're, you're talking about maybe savings of some energy costs with the wrapping of the duckwork on the uh high school. Um is it possible we could get some kind of cost analysis of the, the energy of a school since it's been operated? To me, you drive that thing any time of the year and it's lit up like a Christmas tree. It'd be nice to know if we had any savings since we updated the thing. You got a new chilled beam system in that school where you can never open a window again. So to me, that thing's running twenty-four seven, every day of the year. And the other thing I want to know is where do we stand on this, you know, when I first got on the council, we had this big pile. Of uh energy savings program, when it was some kind of funky loan through the Bank of America. So I'd like to know where we stand on that. With all these energy things we were supposed to save, it'd be nice to know if we did save any money.
The, the quick answer is we are saving some money, but I don't think we are saving as much as we anticipated, but I'll, I'll. I'll get that uh in information to you. Doug and Kevin are more closer to that.
Okay, so if we're gonna possibly save money wrapping the duck, you know, maybe that's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of figure out where we stood.
Um, anyone else? Well, I, I, I guess we're for Roche, I mean, we'll kind of, you know, put it into council's communications, but. Uh any questions uh for Roche from anyone else? Okay, so we, thank, thanks, Roche, for that. Thanks for the uh, you know, the other reports from, from all the uh town departments. It's good to get those uh, good, good to get those updates. Um and and I also, you know, appreciate, you know, again, we're still. In our Covid mode, which is amazing, still going forward, but we hope we see an end somewhere this year. Appreciate, you know, everybody uh in Town Hall and all the whole town staff from yourself. Uh through every department, you know, I think it's amazing, um and we've said this before, but it continues. We've kept the town running and despite all the uh difficult issues we've all had to face, uh. They've all done a great job keeping it going and certainly the progress of the town reflects that, so. Um appreciate that.
Yeah, welcome.
The only other thing I'd mention is, I, I, I know we have a new I T director and I, I do, and you know, I mean, I'll. May, maybe it's me, but other people have mentioned it to me about the um, the town website. Uh I don't know if there's some other, so sometimes it is a little difficult to navigate, to find certain things. I don't know if there's a way, if you're looking at that, you know, just to. Change it a little bit where it's easier, you know, right? Because I, I, even, even I, the mayor, have a hard time finding stuff on that and I kind of know what I need to look for, but.
Yeah.
It's just, yeah, right? I mean, if you uh, I hope you agree with that, Roche, I think.
Yeah, I mean, Kate and I have talked about this and I, you know, you know what they say about websites, right? Two clicks, you should be able to find it in two clicks what you're looking for, otherwise people are gonna, you're gonna lose them. And I think there are a few things that we changed, Kate, um but we, we probably, every time I go there, I do. Try to look at something from, because I'm also relatively new, so I, I've had the same problem. Um, uh this is not a knock on how anybody else, it's just how it was.
Designed.
Designed.
Yeah.
So I, I, I do agree when sometimes people call and say, I can't find. The minutes of the meeting or I can't find the video or like this information.
Right.
Um I think there are things we can do to improve. Um, and Kate, do you, is there anything you want to add? You know, we're working on it.
I think if somebody has an issue finding something, let me know. Um, this was redesigned about, I think, five or six years ago. Uh and it was done with every department had it um input. It wasn't just. Done with um, you know, a, a narrow focus.
Right.
I wanted the blame to be shifted to everybody, so um.
So.
Yeah, no, it's no.
But I think that if there's issues with finding something, let me know. Um, I think this, we use the spotlight a lot. But um I can't get that to be expanded yet. Um but if there's something else, you know, we, we have the buttons um for the library and for the V N A and things like that, but maybe that's not enough. Um.
Yeah.
You know, so let me, i- it's hard for me to spend the time, and I apologize for that, to kind of. Figure out where everything should be or where it should go, but if anyone has any suggestions, um. You know, any of the council members, just shoot me an email, let me see if I can play with it. I'm happy to. You know, i- if it's on a spotlight and there's a few chip, uh clip art, that's me. And I, I like to play, I like to just figure out if I can do something different, but um. I don't always know what the other departments have done and why it's so difficult to find something.
Okay, so uh, two things I would add. Approach that we should take is uh, this is the world wide web, right? It's somebody from the outside looking, people familiar with the town. When they set, set up the uh, the navigation and how to look for things. They already know, so they assume the people, person coming from the outside knows, which is a mistake, right? So uh, so, so that's one. And the second one is um, I, I, I'm not. Sure whether we have this, Kate, something we should look at, is a robust search for engine. So that anyone coming in can go and just search for something and it'll just land you on that page. If, if, if that is, if we can accomplish that, we might be able to answer a lot of these questions so that. If you're coming, coming and if you want to look at a, a town council meeting on such a date, you just put the date and say town council meeting and it should just take you there. Right?
Right.
Not, not to a page where you have to enter this six other parameters, um uh, something like that.
Right.
So uh, yeah, I, I'd say that because in my previous life, also we, I went through this. You know, a lot of the people who design websites and the employees are all people like me, right? And the eighteen to twenty year olds don't try to get to information that way. So the same way, you know, the people who are non-government people. Call it non-bureaucrats, just, just normal citizens, just they're looking for it in a different way. So we, we sort of have to flip it around and try to come from the outside to in and say, oh, how can I find it? And, and I have, you know, I constantly call Kate and say, well, that doesn't make sense, I can't find it, so I can't so-and-so find it. Or I would say, like, where we put things on the spotlight and not, so I'll give you this good example, there was a. We put on the spotlight the um online permitting. Well, that was it. You go in there and then there's no online permit. I said, well, you should actually put the link in there so that. Front page you say you can apply for a permit online and you go to spotlight, right there you should be able to apply, rather than going back. Go to departments, go to building, go to, you know, six different pages later, get to the permitting. So just simple things like that. Lots of room for improvement, we need to go work on it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, and I think, I think we almost have to look at it from, from uh, from uh the point of uh marketing, you know? Because, because I know our company just redid their website and obviously we're trying to, you know, people want to go to your company or your business or whatever it might be. And it's something, it's a marketing thing, right, where you can find things you want to know about the town, right? That's our business, right, it's the town, so, and I agree with you, it's hard to find minutes of meetings. It's hard to find the tax plans for people, the, our, our tax plans that we work so hard on. Um, you know, that give our, our veterans, our disabled, our seniors, it's hard to find them. And I, you know, I have a hard time finding them, I can imagine, unfortunately, uh one of our seniors trying to go in there and find them and I, so. You know, I don't know what the answer is on the furthest thing from Mr. Tecky, but um it, it's, it's not, it's not user friendly. It really is not. And, and I think you're right, Roche, I think you kind of hit the nail on the head. And, you know, a- again, it's, it, you know, it's nobody's fault, it's just we have to have a different approach to it and uh, I, I, I think we just need to look at that. As people from the outside that, you know, have a simple question about the town, they can't find it, they can't find the answer, you know, so. Whatever you can do, moving forward as quickly as possible, if we can, that would be uh, that would be great.
Um, I, I just may say something as well to that. Uh just uh, I, like, you're like, as a town manager, I'm mostly new to the, to the website. Um, but uh.
I, I, I'll let you speak, but it's not the audience of citizens, but, but so I, we, we really, it's not that time, but. If you have one quick comment, I'll go ahead and allow it, I know you're on Board of Finance, welcome, but go ahead.
Thank you, Mark. Uh it's just a, a, a good point to make the website um smart, mobile device friendly.
Yeah, there you go, yeah, that too, yeah, good point, good point, appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I have actually uh reached out to C C M um on that. Because I, I, my, my vision eventually, not eventually, sooner than later, is to have. Roll an app on a mobile phone.
Okay.
So ideally go in there and you can pay your taxes, you can get your marriage license or dog license and get a permit. Uh get all the information on your mobile device. That's the future. I mean, you go to a lot of parts in, you know, Northern Europe, there's no cash anymore. Everything is on the phone, right?
Yeah.
It'll take a little bit for us to get there, we're still getting to the, used to the webex, but. I think, I think we have, we, we need to think like that in the future.
Yeah.
It's from wherever, whenever, right? Pe- people don't want to come to Town Hall, stand in line and fill out a piece of paper, that's just so nineteen fifties.
Yeah.
Right? You should be able to get anything on your device and conduct business from wherever, whenever.
Yeah.
Simple as that. So um tha- that's, I've already reached out to them, it's a little slow, but, but. At least we can migrate one application at a time, uh so that uh, like Raoul said, you know, mobile friendly is, is the, the way to go, actually.
All right, I appreciate that, Kate and and Roche working on. I know you guys, you know, have, have a lot of other stuff to do too, but it's, it's just. The fa- it's the face of the town, right? So we really.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um I have a special committee reports, I don't think we have any. Um, do we? No, we don't have any. Uh and special uh, oh, council communications, anything, anyone else?
Okay.
We good?
Yep.
Okay, uh productive meeting, thank you all, acceptance of minutes for January fifth, take a motion?
Sure, I'll make a, a motion to accept the minutes for January fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, second. All right, thank you very much, all's in favor. All right.
Hi.
Aye.
Close, so moved and motion to adjourn.
Double move.
Yeah.
Don't move, why do you want to stay longer? Should we stay later now?
No, no.
All right, uh.
I'm the two.
Favor, aye, all right, so, so moved, adjourned, thank you all, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, have a nice evening.
Me too.
Bye bye now.
Thank you.
Roche, are we on for Thursday with the meeting with legislators?
Yes, you should have had a email with the information.
Yeah, I'm just checking, things change by the, by the minute, yeah, with the legislature.
Okay.
Hey.
Call me if you have any questions.
Will do, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.